We will now call a February 7th, 2023 Common Council Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski is excused. Alderman Lorick?
Here.
Dukniak?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Gail?
Here.
Kuzikowski?
Here.
Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Catherine, you want to say something?
Certainly.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that'll bring us up to the approval of minutes of January 17th, 2023. If everybody take a moment and review it, and if there's any discussion, please take the floor. When you're satisfied, there's no errors, omissions, corrections, or discussion, motion.
Marshall moves to approve the amendments of January 17th, 2023.
Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Item four is recognition, and we have consideration of a council proclamation. Congratulations to Samuel Amundson for receiving his Eagle Scout. Catherine, would you please read that?
Certainly. Congratulations to Samuel Amundson, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the conferring of an Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards that can be bestowed upon a Boy Scout. And whereas such an award is an earned award, and that the recipient must perform and successfully complete and pass the rigid requirements exacted to achieve an Eagle Scout Award. And whereas less than 4% of all Scouts actually achieve the goal. And whereas at a quarter honor, Court of Honor to be held at Faith Presbyterian Church on Friday, February 18th, 2023, at 2:00 PM, an Eagle Award will be conferred upon Samuel. And whereas volunteers at Faith Presbyterian Church organize and run the Faith Food Cupboard, a food pantry open three times a month, serving members of the community during a time of food insecurity. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, usage of the food pantry increased dramatically from assisting five families in January 2020 to serving 300 families in December of 2022. And whereas during the increase in usage of the food pantry, it was found that there was a need to better organize, store, move, and distribute items more efficiently. And whereas as this Eagle project, Samuel chose to build four rolling shelving units for which empty grocery bags could be placed, wheeled to cupboards, filled, and then wheeled to citizens waiting for pickup. And whereas each shelving unit has the capacity to hold 16 grocery bags, which are often pre-filled the night prior for quick service once a pantry opened. And whereas Samuel collected donations from his troop, church, friends, and family members, with some donations received from far away as overseas. And whereas Samuel coordinated the efforts of 17 volunteers, including fellow Scouts and family members, to assist with the planning and construction of the rolling shelves, putting in a total of over 315 man-hours of work. And whereas the Oak Creek Common Council wishes to recognize this noteworthy achievement of Samuel. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek hereby extend their congratulations to Eagle Scout Samuel Amundson for having an Eagle Scout Award conferred upon him by the Boy Scouts of America. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and the city clerk be, and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Samuel Amundson. Presented and adopted 7th day of February, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. Does anybody have any words for Samuel? No. I did see Samuel's project, and I will be out on Saturday, not this Saturday, but Saturday, I believe, at the 18th, to help him celebrate this milestone event in his career as a Scout. It was a very thoughtful, well-needed project, and I just want to extend my congratulations, Samuel. And we will be out there with his proclamation plaque next weekend, so congratulations to him. No further discussion? Motion on four, please.
Marshall will move to consider, to pass council proclamation number 23-01. Congratulations to Samuel Amundson for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Kuzikowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderperson Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Item five is public hearing and its consideration, conditional use consideration of an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow for an animal training animal therapy facility on a portion of the multi-tenant industrial building on the property of 140 East Rossin. Catherine, would you read that into record?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider requests submitted by Peter Benson, Dog Paddle, Inc. for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow an animal training animal therapy facility within a portion of the existing multi-tenant industrial building on the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue. Applicant is Peter Benson, Dog Paddle, Inc., property owner, East Rossin Avenue LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is January 11th, 2023.
Catherine, Doug?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the city of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing on a request to amend the conditional use permit for the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue to include animal training and therapy. You should recall that this property has been through a few regulatory changes over the past couple of months, changing from manufacturing to business on the comprehensive plan in response to a number of conditional use permits that were being requested and granted for tenants within this facility. Given that the property will be the subject of a pending rezoning for a commercial zoning later on this spring, it'll probably, that'll come to some fruition, but I just, at this point in time, the initial use request for animal therapy for the business called Dog Paddle is before you. And the business itself, you can see where in the development at 140 East Rossin it will be located, shown on the yellow. And essentially, it's indoor recreational therapeutic swimming services for dogs. There's some information on the slide. It talks about what their business model and what this is and what it is not. It's not an open swimming for, you know, bring your pets. And it's a very structured opportunity for those, their clients, to bring in their animals for therapy and for training. You can see the hours of operation are not abnormal, averages 12 to 16 appointments per day. And the impact would be relatively low. Given these factors, the planning commission did review the request to amend the conditional use permit. And they did, at their meeting of January 10th of this year, recommend approval subject to the conditions and restrictions, which again just include the list of permitted uses in response to this request. But with that in mind, this is a public hearing. Anyone with any questions or comments regarding the proposal to amend the conditional use permit for the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue to include animal training and therapy, please approach microphone, give your name and address. If you do address your questions or comments to the common council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak? Second call, anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium. Third and final call on item five, anybody wishing to speak on Dog Paddle and the conditional use permit? Please approach podium, give your name and address. Now close the public hearing and move on to item six, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the conditions and restrictions for a physical and occupational therapy clinic, a behavior treatment service clinic, and indoor recreation facilities, outdoor recreation facilities, and a private emergency service facility and animal training facility on the property at 140 East Rossin. Members of the council, Greg?
I'll just briefly go over planning commission. There were no issues at planning. Alderman Kirkowski was present. He did speak in support of this. He said he met with the owner and discussed kind of in length the business. He's got no feedback, no complaints from anybody. This is a relocation of a business that is operating currently on the grounds of the 440th at the airport. Being told they have to leave.
Bums it up very well, Greg.
Quick question, Alderman Dukniak, 3rd district, no issues with the amendment to the conditional use permit. The question about the structure, Doug, or planning, you guys may know. Is this a rigid structure? It's 13 by 25, but how deep is it?
That I do not know.
Any concerns with flooding if this thing break? Oh, okay. Someone from, okay.
I will need your name and address for the record, please.
Peter Benson, my home address.
Or the business.
Currently at 6023 South Jesper Ave.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a, one of those bladder pools that people put up in their backyards.
Oh, sure, okay.
Yeah, yeah, 13 by 25, and then I have a deck built completely around it, covered in EPDM roofing rubber to contain the water.
Okay, thank you. Any concerns at planning about potential for a break or burst?
No, I believe it was covered as well.
Okay.
They had the deck and ability for the dogs to go in and out against jumping pool or see a dog.
Not a dock diving pool, yes. Fun and therapeutic.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Any other discussions, questions?
Give me, you may know, I saw the most controversial thing here is about the owner of the property that we designated.
A waste area?
Station for the dogs to...
We did talk about that at planning, designated area, and of course, bags will be...
Is there, is there a part, a piece on this property for that? It can land next door.
You know, and there are landscaped areas, and I mean, this was not, never set up as a, it was set up as a flex building, so there wasn't this area that was specially designed for that. I don't know what special provision that the building owner is making to allow for that.
Can you get an answer?
Yeah, there's about a 200 square foot area of landscaped grass in front of the building. I also plan on out back putting a small area, probably about 200 square feet, artificial turf, self-draining artificial turf.
Enough.
Have one or two at a time. Okay.
Sorry, you'll have to be on the microphone.
Sorry.
Yeah, there's only two customers in the building at a time. They may have multiple dogs. Some people bring more than one dog. But I would say maximum in the building, I've probably had four, five, that's it, except for small dogs. Sometimes we'll have more of those.
Any other discussion, questions? Seeing none, motion on six, please.
Ork moves to adopt ordinance 3064, an ordinance to amend the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 3037 for a physical and occupational therapy clinic, behavioral treatment services clinic, indoor recreation facility, outdoor recreation facility. Is this the correct one? Private emergency service facility, and an animal training therapy facility on the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue.
Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Okay. Item seven is consideration of a motion to approve the plan for financing of $11,245,000 note anticipation notes and $3,585,000 general obligation promissory notes. Max?
Thank you, Mayor. Max Gagan, Assistant City Administrator and Comptroller. So before you tonight is the plan of finance, which is for the issuances of $11,245,000 note anticipation notes and $3,585,000 general obligation. And that's primarily to finance capital projects that the common council previously approved in 2023 capital improvement. The note anticipation notes are being issued to finance projects at the lakefront. So the lakefront loss stabilization and investment project, as well as the demolition of the former Peter Benson factory. And lastly, to begin design work for the parkland area north of Vista Park. And secondly, the geo notes are being sold to finance the Drexel Avenue Stormwater Lift Station project, as well as a cost reimbursement for this one. Project. And with us tonight, we do have Justin Fisher, the Managing Director of Public Finance for Baird. He's going to walk through just the terms of both of the issuances as well.
Thanks, Max. Good to see everyone again. So as Max, you know, alluded to, there's going to be two borrowings that you're going to be considering tonight. The first one is going to be the $11,245,000, the other one is going to be the $3,585,000. We'll get to that in a second. We'll go through the timeline. It's a very similar process to what we've done historically over the last several issues. And the reason why we're doing the parameters resolution again is because it gives flexibility in when we enter the bond market. Right now, interest rates continue to be pretty volatile. You're seeing that every day. One day you think inflation's being subsided, and the next day the jobs report comes out, and everything kind of goes the other way. So this is really a parameters resolution to give authority to sign off on the bond sale if certain parameters are met. So that's, that's going to be considered tonight. That's going to give authority to the city administrator and the Assistant City Administrator/Comptroller, which is very similar to what we've done in the past. We've already started the process of going down the offering document, process documentation, putting that together. We actually have our bond rating call tomorrow with Moody's, where Andrew, Max, and myself will be participating on that. And it's actually a full-blown presentation that we go through with Moody's, talking about all the great things that are going on in the city, talking about the financials, and ultimately answering all their questions that they have in order to get the strong bond credit rating that you have and maintain. So that'll be happening tomorrow, and then everything else will be kind of working itself out over the next month, month and a half, as we get ready to lock in the interest rates. So come late March, early April, that's when we would anticipate getting into the bond market, and then closing early May. May 1st is kind of the anticipated closing date of when you would receive the funds for these projects. So again, $11,245,000 for the note anticipation note. This is for TID number 13, the lakefront projects. Structure is maturing April 1, 2026, first interest payment being April 1, 2024, with capitalized interest through April 1 of 2025. It's going to be callable, meaning you can prepay it, refinance, et cetera, on April 1 of 2025, and the estimated interest rate is a 4.47%. Again, like I always show you, you know, the interest rates I'm using are pretty conservative because, you know, things could turn pretty quick, and we've seen that happen. But ideally, this is a conservative rate, and we come in much better than what I'm showing. So the max parameter would be 5%. The other borrowing, $3,585,000 general obligation promissory notes, TID 13 projects, and storm-supported related projects, maturing April 1, 2024 to 2033, so a 10-year financing. First interest being April 1, 2024, and capitalized interest again through 4/1 of 2025. Callable April 1, 2030, and the estimated rate 4.57%. Max parameters would be 5%. So if you go to the next page, there's a lot of numbers on this page, and I know you don't have a microscope and you can't read it all, but I'm going to kind of walk you through from the left side of the page to the right side of the page. The left side of the page being the projected tax increment revenues for TID number 13. You can see that it really starts kicking in come about 2027. That's what the projection is. You know, it starts to ramp up over the next several years. The city has also been very proactive in allowing for other tax increment districts to donate to TID number 13, the lakefront area, if it needs, you know, money to help support the different projects going on in there. Between those two, that's the column C. So you can see what the total projected revenues could potentially be to go to help pay for the debt service, not only on this project, but also future projects that are planned for that area, because it's a, it's a big undertaking for the city. So the middle of the page, that's what we're talking about tonight. And then the right side of the page, what I also did in that column I there is I modeled in all the future potential borrowings that may take place over the next several years related to other infrastructure-related projects along that area. So we kind of modeled in everything that we can think of from the debt perspective and what the projected revenues are. And on the far right side of the page, that's what you can see, once you have your revenues minus your expenditures, what you're available for after debt service and admin costs. So you can see it's, with cash flow, very nicely. Obviously, that includes some of these TID donations that we're having in there. But again, that doesn't necessarily have to be the case. It's just a nice kind of safety net if we need it. So overall, very, very positive-looking outlook for that area. The last page there is related to the storms-supported related projects. And this, you can see, is just basically going to be a level repayment schedule over a 10-year period. So pretty, pretty plain vanilla with this type of financing. So like I said, we've, we've got a lot going on, a lot of pieces to the puzzle, but we're, you know, in the next month, month and a half, we're going to be hopefully in position to get into the market and lock in the interest rate and get you the money.
Questions for Justin?
Seeing none, then, we'll take a motion.
Marshall moves to approve the plan of finance for $11,245,000 note anticipation notes and $3,585,000 general obligation promissory notes.
Kuzikowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Okay. Item eight, consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $12 million general obligation promissory notes and authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $12 million note anticipation notes, Series 2023B, in anticipation thereof.
So resolution number 12389-0723, that's the parameters resolution. So that authorizes the city administrator or assistant city administrator comptroller to proceed with the note sale. Parameters for that would be a total cost of $12 million and interest rate. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments from Max?
Seeing no discussion, motion on eight.
Marshall moves to adopt resolution number 12389-020723, a resolution authorizing issuance of not to exceed $12 million in general obligation promissory notes and authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $12 million note anticipation notes, Series 2023B, in anticipation thereof.
Kuzikowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Epstein.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
And item nine is consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $3,750,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2023C. Max, once again.
Well, this is our last parameters resolution, resolution number 12390-0723. Again, authorizes the city administrator or assistant city administrator comptroller sell the promissory notes. Parameters on this is a maximum price not to exceed $75 million and an interest rate of 5%. Again, happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Max? Seeing no questions or discussion, motion.
Marshall moves to adopt resolution number 12390-020723, a resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $3,750,000 in general obligation promissory notes, Series 2023.
Kuzikowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye. Oh, sorry.
Epstein? Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Okay. Item 10 is community development and its consideration of a motion to approve a contract for the design of the first phase of the Drexel Avenue Streetscape Improvements, the Grave, for a total of $165,000. Doug?
Thank you. In December of 2021, the planning commission approved the Streetscape Plan for Drexel Avenue that ran the length from IKEA Way on the west to Howell Avenue on the east. And that plan, and I didn't include the whole plan in here, but I did include several relevant pages, identifies improvements to the roadway, medians, and the adjacent sidewalk areas in the corridor. Grave prepared the initial plan. After the adoption of that plan, the next step would be to design the actual improvements. And the proposal that you have before you from Grave would do that for the first phase of that those Streetscape improvements, which would take place from IKEA Way east to somewhere in the neighborhood of the River O'Track. So that would be your first phase, and the council has allocated $2.5 million for the first phase of that project. And as you recall, the plan was set up in a very more flexible format where you could do different levels of Streetscape improvements, and in some cases, there would be some kind of à la carte choices. So that, you know, the design money would cover as much or as little as $2.5 million could cover this environment. But we're hopeful and we're confident that the plan that's put forward will allow the council the flexibility to get a really great project off the ground yet this year.
Thank you, Doug. Questions for Doug concerning the Streetscape? Okay.
Sorry, Danny. Sorry, Doug, when did you, or Andrew, too, when do we expect to bring the actual authorization for the project forward?
That would be at the point after we got the bids all set to go, we're going to get our authorization bid. So I anticipate probably in fall of this year.
Well, hopefully, just as a bit of this project, we're standing here about to authorize this study, a plan to spend at least $2.5 million on this project. We'd hope that we also, you know, we're going to make a commitment to the way this corridor looks. Included in that is the overall aspect of the entire community, stuff that we've let slide in terms of appearances. We're going to focus on the appearance here. We need to make the same investment in attention to other stuff in the community that we're currently not doing. Otherwise, it's pointless.
Absolutely. I know that some of the strategic plan elements, past plans have acknowledged that we need to take a more proactive approach to the aesthetics of our community corridors.
Maybe, you know, state or county responsibilities, they're not doing it. But if we're going to spend this kind of money, we're going to authorize the community to spend this kind of money to plan this. That's a commitment we're going to have to make. We can't be driving up in our major thoroughfares and weeds as tall as our corridors, litter on our off-ramps. That's the major appearance that people get in the community when they stop in Oak Creek. Get off the freeway, they better look like you spent money, spent $2.5 million, say, at least, on a thoroughfare. And that's the way the rest of it should be, too. So something we just got to keep in mind generally as we're thinking about this whole thing globally. We're doing time to do it, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none, motion.
Ork moves to approve a contract for design of the first phase of the Drexel Avenue Streetscape Improvements, the Grave, for a total of $165,000.
Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman, Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
And item 11 is engineering and its consideration of a motion to authorize the engineering department to enter into a three-party design contract not to exceed $155,587 between the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, city of Oak Creek, and Collins Engineering, Inc. for the design services for the South Sixth Street Bridge over the branch of the Oak Creek. Matt?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Sullivan, city engineer. Before you, you have what Mayor Dan described. As you recall, in July, the council approved... As you recall, in July, the council approved the resolution for us to enter into a state municipal agreement with WISDOT for the design and construction of the bridge over the branch of Oak Creek, which is located approximately at 7600 South Sixth Street. We advertised for RFP, we received one at that point. Who authorized us to go into negotiations with Collins Engineering. The price that came back, we kind of negotiated down back and forth with them and DOT. At this point, we felt that this was about where we could get. There was authorized money, which was actually misprinted in our fiscal impact. It's actually $30,000 authorized at the time. Under the agreement, we have 20% of the money we would have to pay. 80% is paid by DOT under this agreement. Approximately, we're short a little bit of money, but we have looked at our other funding areas and we do have money allocated in bridge maintenance. Transfer and cover that. Our concern is not with that. It's more come along to agreement here and resolution support and agreeing this contract with. Any questions? Anything along those lines?
Questions for Matt? Matt, regarding the federal funds, the 12447 that's being provided, how did that come about?
That was through our application to the local bridge program. We were applied for it, we were approved, that's how we went through the SMA. That's just part of the, part of the deal when you go through type of grant funding. So it's generally an 80/20, no reimbursement, it's just filling and paying.
Oh, based on design, as we, what it's going to cost, will we be able to go after more federal money?
Yes, there is more money out there. We have applied under different programs. Fortunately, we haven't received other funding, but we have a couple items actually to address another local bridge. We did funding. There are areas where we're getting it and we continue to look for.
Right, thank you. Good job, by the way. Huge.
Well, it's, that's for just only design.
Right.
Construction's also included.
But even still, no, we're not paying for it.
No.
It's nice to see our money coming back.
Okay. For my own. How many bridges and tolls is?
Under the DOT program, we're responsible for around 15 or 16 bridges. Apparently, we have two that we have to look over every year. Inspections on because they're below a certain rating. There are two bridges that we're actually addressing at this point.
My memory, we've done five bridges.
Done two complete replacements and did a maintenance project two or three years ago that probably addressed about eight through maintenance.
Are there discussion? Seeing none, motion? Cork moves to authorize the engineering department to enter into a three-party design contract not to exceed $155,587 between the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, City of Oak Creek, and Collins Engineers, Inc. for the design services of the South Sixth Street Bridge over Branch of Oak Creek.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Item 12 is consideration of a resolution approving a state municipal agreement for the state let local bridge project and superstructure replacement of the bridge located on South Sixth Street, the bridge over the. Matt, again?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Much like the last item, this is actually the first step in beginning the process for receiving the grant and moving forward, which is our state municipal agreement. For you, we have it kind of outlined. This would cover both design and construction also. So the difference between this bridge and the last one that we spoke of, this one is just a superstructure replacement, so it's basically replacing the bridge deck and leaving abutments in place. In accordance with their program, it has to be at a super or at a rating between 50 and 80 to be able to qualify for this type of rehab. If it's below 50, it qualifies for replacement. This one is rated about a 67. So in order to get a replacement, we'd probably be waiting anywhere from five to 10 years or longer for it to deteriorate to that point. You look at the appearance right now, it probably needs to be rehabbed and that's why we chose to go this route. Collins Engineering actually did a pre-study for it in order for us to apply for this. So one of the reasons why they're not actually involved in the proposal part of it. That allowed us to get the funding and granting on this and qualify for it. So at this point, we're looking to enter into the municipal agreement. The DOT is kind of pushing this one along, so we've actually been authorized by them to already go out for proposals for the design, which we did receive Friday last week. But we're kind of a couple steps ahead in this, we just want to make very clear on this. But so they're trying to get us into earlier fiscal year for design, what we have. So this SMA covers all of that. You have any questions?
Questions for Matt? Okay. Seeing none? Motion? Cork moves to approve resolution number 12385-020723, a resolution approving the state municipal agreement for a state let local bridge project, the superstructure replacement of the bridge located on South Sixth Street, Bridge over Oak Creek.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
And 13 is consideration of a resolution in support of the addition of city sidewalks on Milwaukee County's proposed West Rossen Avenue reconstruction project.
So before you have a resolution for support of the city sidewalk for Milwaukee County's project on West Rossen, that's from South 13th Street to South Howell. Is anticipated this project will be constructed in 2025. Typically, we do request and under the funding that they have, they have to look at they call complete streets, which includes sidewalks and bike paths along with complete construction of the roadway. Typically, and generally, when we go through this process, they request that we support our resolution, which would then basically commit the city to following our municipal code and maintenance. Such before we take it over. Any questions, Al? Deputy?
Matt?
I'm sorry. You had something?
No, go ahead.
And we're, have we done this already in the city where the county is constructed and we took over ownership in the Ryan Road project like that?
South 13th Street, South 13th Street, Rossin Avenue, the west. Have through Enneque College Avenue, I believe, taken that for the state up and down Howell Avenue. And this is a standard resolution that we support on all those projects.
And where there are private landowners, they'd be responsible for some removal?
According to the municipal code, yes.
And there's enough room underneath the.
Yeah, so it would come back from basically having a full terrace to be in the back of curb and having a wider sidewalk. Already kind of in place at that point.
Is there like Ryan Road, the underpass there? Concrete abutment that would guard that side?
Not believe so. Oh, could that be included in their design? Sure it could be, but at this point, I'd have to look. We have a design review February 18th or 16th. So it's coming up. Not required.
Matt, just out of curiosity, they're going to put in dedicated bike lanes on Rossin. It won't go with a multi-user path?
What they've done in the past is they've had a wider outside lane, a shared lane.
Any other questions? Okay. Motion? Cork moves to approve resolution number 12386-020723 in support of the addition of city sidewalk on Milwaukee County's proposed West Rossin Avenue reconstruction project.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
And item 14 is consideration of a resolution granting a We Energies 15 by 20 permanent underground electrical easement at 2026 East Ryan Road.
Yes, we were contacted by We Energies Real Estate Section requesting this easement over our property. The property is located down on Ryan Road, just almost between Shepherd or Nicholson and Pennsylvania, wetland area, just east of the railroad tracks, other substation. We do own a piece of land that's more in an L shape with about a 15-foot wide strip that runs up to Ryan Road. In order for them and their plan that they're doing for installation of new electric lines, they're actually putting them on the north side of the ditch, north side of Ryan Road. This does keep them out of the road bed. It also keeps them away from the ditch, which is pretty significant out there. So in order for them to get from the substation to the other private properties across our piece of land. At this point, we looked at it as far as would it be in an area that would be impacted by road widening or improvements? Felt pretty comfortable that it wouldn't. Therefore, we recommend that consider this motion.
Questions? Comments for Matt? Okay, seeing none, motion?
Marshall moves to adopt resolution number 12387-020723, a resolution granting a We Energies 15 feet by 20 feet point one permanent underground electric easement at 2026 East Ryan Road.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
And item 15 is the License Committee. Going to turn that over to Alderman Dukenyak tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Dan. For the License Committee report of February 7th, 2023, we have 15 requests, license requests, operators license requests. We have a transient merchant request from Mad City Windows for seven of their associates. And then finally, we have a temporary Class B beer license, agent of St. Stephen's Catholic Church, so that they can serve some brewskis at their annual Lenten fish fry. So anybody have any comments, concerns, or questions about the License Committee report requests? Didn't think so. So with that, Dukenyak moves to approve the various license requests as listed on the 2723 License Committee report.
Cork seconds. Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
And item 16 is our vendor summary report and consideration to approve by motion February 1st, 2023, vendor summary report in the amount of $1,9361.25. Of this total, $450,793.62 will affect the fiscal year 2022, with the remaining $642,267.63 affecting 2023. So please take a look, and if you have any questions, please take the floor and direct it to the appropriate person in the room. And when you're satisfied, there's no questions, comments, discussion, motion?
Mayor Dan, I just have one question, and nothing related to the payments. And Matt, maybe you're able to answer this. Has that Fuel Island tank replacement been completed?
No, we're actually, the diesel tank is there. We have the lines kind of prepped and ready. The unleaded is, tank has been raised out of the floodplain that is actually connected and functioning at this point. We're working through kind of some minor modifications to the tanks to allow proper filling, I guess, more in a safe manner. As far as, we're looking probably in the next few months that they'll be addressing the actual ground tank and final hookup and finishing of the islands.
There's still a ways to go then.
Yeah, it's just we're kind of with the weather and things along those lines. It's wouldn't be prudent at this point to start tearing things up and.
Okay.
Better weather.
Thanks, Matt.
Other questions? Discussion? Motion, please.
Marshall moves to approve the February 1st, 2023 vendor summary report in the total of $1,9361.25.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item 17 is to consider a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section 19.85, to discuss the following. A) Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C, to discuss the performance evaluation of the city administrator. B) Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, consider possible settlement of Wanda Jimenez Malave at All versus the City of Oak Creek, Milwaukee County Case Number 2022 CV4438. C) Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, to consider the Wisconsin State Local Government opioid bankruptcy memorandum of understanding regarding opioid litigation, MLD 2804, pending in the Northern District of Ohio. And D) Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, consider an amendment to TID Number 11 Finance Development Agreement and Phase 3 Agreement for Emerald Row Phase 1. Second amendment to TID Number 11 Finance Development Agreement and Phase 3 Amendment for Emerald Row Phase 2 and 3, and TID Number 11 Finance Development Agreement for Emerald Row Phase 3, Parcells A and C. President Gail?
Why you say that? Quick, four times, right?
That is.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section 19.85, to discuss the following. Section, A) Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C, to discuss the performance evaluation with the city administrator. B) Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, to consider possible settlement of Wanda Jimenez Malave at All versus City of Oak Creek at All. C) Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, to consider a Wisconsin State Local Government opioid bankruptcy memorandum of understanding regarding in ra opioid litigation, MDL 2804, pending in the Northern District of Ohio. And D) Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, to consider amendment to TID Number 11 Finance Development Agreement and Phase 3 Agreement for Emerald Row Phase 1. Second amendment to TID Number 11 Finance Development Agreement and Phase 3 Agreement for Emerald Row Phase 2 and 3, and TID Number 11 Finance Development Agreement for Emerald Row Phase 3.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
We will now convene in closed session and resume at its conclusion. Thank you. We will now consider a motion to reconvene in open session.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail moves to reconvene in open session.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
And item 19 is a consideration to take any appropriate action of closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail moved at the common council approve a $9,000 settlement in Milwaukee County Case Number 2022 CV4438 with a full release of all claims and dismissal of the case.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
And then Mayor, Gail then moved to hold item number 20 to date certain of the next common council meeting of February 20, 2023.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Do we have to accept?
Let's see.
The opiate? Gail, then, the mayor will move that the common council approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Wisconsin State Local Government Opioid Bankruptcy Memorandum of Understanding Regarding In Ra Opioid Litigation, MDL 2804, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, and that will move us to adjournment. So, motion, anybody?
Marshall moves to adjourn.